This is the Thursday, September 13th, meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Would you call the roll, please?
Timothy Vig.
Here.
Dean Cars.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Joshua Fink.
Here.
Ann Denny.
Here.
Kate Williams. Dale Patrick. John Dunham.
Here.
Deanna Wallon.
Here.
We have before us minutes from the August 9, 2012, meeting that are before us for approval. Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes? And are there any comments? Is there any objection to approval of the minutes? Could I have a motion for approval? I would like to make one comment on page five. Board member Williams, I believe she was leaning "not leaving," middle paragraph. If we could make that change. Besides that, are there any other comments? Could I have a motion for approval? Ms. Denny, thank you. Could I have a second? Mr. Dunham, second. Is there any discussion from either of you? Is there any objection to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are approved, as noted. Moving on our agenda, Special Order of Business, executive sessions, disclosures. Are there any disclosures this evening? Any disclosures by any of the board members? Seeing none, that moves us on to our consent agenda. Mr. Fink.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I do have a disclosure. I was not present at the August 9, 2012, meeting and will be abstaining from voting on the resolutions under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Consent agenda. We have before us two, three, four, six resolutions for approval. Is there any, anyone that would like to pull any of those resolutions? If not, could I have a motion to approve? Mr. Dunham, you've indicated a motion to approve the resolutions on the consent agenda. Mr. Vig, you've indicated a second.
Correct.
Is there any objection to approval of the consent agenda items? Seeing none, consent agenda is approved. We have no appearance requests or unfinished business this evening. That brings us, nor do we have any items on our regular agenda. Brings us to our public hearings. Before we hear our first case, I would like to read the Order of Business for variance hearings. The Chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The Board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The Board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance, not to exceed 10 minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the Board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the Chair. The applicant shall give his/her presentation, not exceeding 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the proof of burden rests upon the applicant, who must convince the Board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the Board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the Chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the Board, staff, or the applicant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right to rebuttal, three minutes each. The Board shall hear, the Board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the Board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the Board and the Chair asks for a positive motion from the Board. We, in order to grant a variance, a majority of the fully constituted Board must vote in favor of that variance. This Board is made up of nine members. There are two that are absent this evening, so even though those two people aren't absent, the requirement for a variance is that five votes in favor of a variance be passed, and that's a majority of the fully constituted Board. That brings us to our first case this evening. The case number is 2012-080. The petitioner is Theodore Mallett. Is Mr. Mallett present? Thank you. You can have a seat. Just one sec, we're going to have staff give a presentation. Could staff provide us first with the sufficiency of notice?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on July 27, 138 public hearing notices were mailed. As of the writing of the staff report, one comment was received supporting the encroachment.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Would you proceed with your presentation?
The variance concerns to allow an existing addition attached to a non-conforming principal structure to encroach into the required 20-foot front yard setback, and also a variance to allow a non-conforming principal structure to encroach into the required 20-foot front This is a request for a variance from 2140-080G to allow a house to encroach 3.9 feet into the required front yard setback. The ASBelt survey shows the existing garage addition is approximately 14.8 by 30.8 feet. It was added to the side of the existing house. The garage encroaches approximately 3.9 feet into the 20-foot front yard setback. The existing house also encroaches 3.9 feet into the front yard setback and does not have legal non-conforming rights. The existing house was moved onto the property after zoning and therefore is not a legal non-conforming structure and is in violation of 2140-040. The garage addition is also not a legal non-conforming structure and is also in violation. The applicant, the applicant applied for a building permit on January 18, 2007, for a 430-foot square foot garage. A comment from zoning review dated the very next day notes that it appears from the plot plan that the addition may encroach into the 20-foot front yard setback. Please clarify. The existing house also encroaches into the front yard setback. The permit was not approved or issued. As a result, code enforcement opened a case due to the construction of the garage without a permit. Regarding the findings, as to standard number one, the standard is not substantially met. The physical characteristics of the lot are typical for the neighborhood. Standard number two, the standard is not substantially met. The rear yard slopes, as shown in the attached photograph submitted by the applicant, however, the slope is not so severe as to be considered special or extraordinary circumstances, nor would it deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. The applicant, the applicant claims that due to the rear yard slope and the poor soil quality, a garage could not have been built in the rear yard without first excavating several tons of buried trash and wood and bringing in clean fill. Standard number three, this standard is not substantially met. Mr. Mallett applied for a building permit for the garage addition but did not wait to receive approval before building the garage. Standard number four, this standard is substantially met. The garage addition and house have been in this location for many years without any apparent issues. The applicant sought petition signatures from the neighbors concerning the variance request. Many neighbors signed the petition indicating their non-objection to the variance request. Standard number five, the standard is substantially met. The garage addition to the house will not change the character of the neighborhood. Standard six, the standard is substantially met. The house and the garage addition will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. Standard seven, this standard is substantially met. The requested variance can be considered the minimum variance needed as the garage is already constructed. Similarly, the house is already constructed in its current location. The Division recommendation, as all seven standards for granting a variance are not substantially met, the Division recommends denial of the variance. To allow the existing garage addition to the existing home to encroach into the required front yard setback, and denial of a variance to allow a non-conforming principal structure to encroach into the required 20-foot, 20-foot front yard setback. If at the conclusion of the public hearing, the Board finds that all standards are substantially met and approves the variance request, the Department recommends the three conditions for the Board's consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Are there any questions of staff by any of the board members? Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Ferguson, on page three, the first sentence of the site description and proposal references 2140-080, which is R6, and everything else in the presentation references 040, which I believe is the one that applies here. Just for the record, is that correct?
It should be 040.
Are there any other questions of staff? If not, could the applicant please come forward? Could you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Theodore Mallett, T-H-E-O-D-O-R-E-M-A-L-L-E-T-T.
Thank you, Mr. Mallett. And you have 10 minutes for your presentation, and we must find that all seven standards are met in order to grant a variance, so if your presentation could address the seven standards, please.
Okay. I have a handout here that I'd like to read into the record.
That's fine. We will have to keep a copy of that, at least one copy, for 30 days.
Yeah, and keep all the copies out of there.
You can proceed with your presentation, Mr. Mallett.
I would like to address the first three standards that were deemed to be not substantially met. Number one, the fill used to make the back half of the lot is unstable.
And excuse me, Mr. Mallett, if you could just adjust that microphone so you speak into it, so we can get this on the recording. Thank you very much.
All right. The fill used to make the back half of the lot is unstable. This was discovered when my wife and I rented a power auger to dig the paddlings for the shed. As we dug holes for the sonotubes, we soon started bringing up a mixture containing rotting wood, board fragments, insulation, pieces of metal, and other items of trash that is continually sinking every year. Part of it is where the old septic system was removed and where the lot was cleared of trees. Possibly the trees were ground up and used with trash to form a base for the gravel. There are large areas of the flat end of the backyard that continue to sink each year. I have hauled dirt and filled these areas multiple times, but they keep sinking. My neighbor to the west has the same problem and his haul dump truck loads the dirt to fill the sinking ground against his house and in the yard. His yard still keeps sinking and has a pond every year at snowmelt. Can you imagine my backyard with over six feet of fill, 15 feet wide plus the height of the garage, over 30 feet long, sitting in my backyard? My neighbors would be all over me for blocking their view, plus how ugly it would look. Due to the slope of the driveway to reach the backyard, I would have to build a barrier along the side of my house on the east to keep from accidentally sliding my vehicle through the windows of the master bedroom during the winter time, which are at ground level, at snowmelt time in the spring. Such a garage barrier could possibly divert water onto the house to the west and cause flooding of his house and a possible lawsuit. In retrospect, had I known it was encroaching, the only alternative would have been to make it into a one-car garage or move it farther north along the same line by using fill. I feel I had to build a garage in the present location to gain parity with my neighbors and to cause the least disturbance to their properties. Number two, my house was originally put on that lot, encroached 3.9 feet into the 20-foot yard setback without my knowledge. I recently found a paragraph titled "Nonconforming Grandfather Rights" under Code Section 21.55.010. It reads as follows, quote, "Encroachments into the required setback that existed prior to January 1, 1986 on may be considered legally nonconforming, even if they were created after zoning. The process and application for obtaining a certification of nonconforming is the same as for establishing conventional nonconforming rights," unquote. The nonconforming status determination report shows the house was placed on my lot in 1974, so it is a legal nonconforming structure. The main reason I added onto the house in 1992 was to correct a major safety hazard. When they purchased the house a year before, the only way you could get from the upper level to the lower level was on a homemade, very narrow spiral staircase. Otherwise, you had to go out to the upper level door, go down a flight of stairs, go around to the back of the house, and in the back door. The spiral staircase was so narrow that you could not carry a laundry basket down it, nor have more than one person on it at a time. It was not up to code in any respect, and with two children in the house, it was downright dangerous, plus it restricted ingress, making it a fire hazard. I replaced it with a split foyer entry that allows the front, entry that allows front door access from the lower level, plus two sets of stairs from upper level to the front door. The addition was under 100 square feet, so it did not need a building permit under Anchorage Administrative Code 23.10.104.1. Number three, a packet was given to me last Friday by senior planner Sharon Ferguson concerning her comments and recommendations. It contained comments from the zoning review that the garage may encroach into the front yard setback and the existing house also encroaches and requested further clarification. It was the first time I had ever seen the document. I am not sure what happened because this notice was never received by me. I remember calling about the building permit and being told it was not ready, and that's all. Approximately four and a half months later, although no building permit was issued, I mistakenly went ahead and started the project, knowing I had applied for in good faith and believed it would show up. Believe me, I would not have spent an estimated $20,000 building a garage, knowing that it was encroaching on the front yard setback and in violation of a municipal code. The first time I became aware of any question on the setback was when I received a letter from Land Use Enforcement Officer Tim Hamery dated October 11, 2010, stating that I had failed to complete the issuance of a building permit. He stated that he had inspected the property and it appeared to be in the front yard setback, which needed to be addressed. He also stated he appreciated my help in maintaining the appearance of the neighborhood, as have many of my neighbors. Since I did not receive a prior notice that the property encroached on the setback, I believe my only sin was not following through with obtaining a building permit, and I am willing to deal with that. I believe that all of the standards have been substantially met to prove a variance. I plead with you to approve the variance and not make me destroy a project that I've spent the last 21 years working on.
Thank you, Mr. Mallett. Are there any questions of Mr. Mallett by the board members? Mr. Dunham.
Yeah, Mr. Mallett, I was looking through the code. Do you have a copy of the section that you were quoting in the first part, the 2155.010, where you say that...
I gave Sharon a copy of it when I picked these things up, and she called me back agreeing that that was correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, could we ask staff if there's a copy that we can review?
Hey, I have it right here.
Okay. That's a citation from the code.
It's just the front page. There's actually three pages to it, but the front page has all the substantial information you need.
Yeah, just, we will have to keep this copy for 30 days.
That's fine.
Okay.
It's like the bottom paragraph that has all the goodie on it.
Okay, Mr. Mallett, this is, looks like it's a printout from...
My computer.
One of the webpages.
Yeah.
But it's not the municipal code. Because I have a copy of the municipal code here, unless it's out of date, and that's what I was trying to determine on Title 21, and I didn't see the language that was mentioned. And maybe the one I have is out of date. I don't know. We could probably ask staff and find out. My, my code says it was last updated September 30, 2009, which means it's...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what date that was, you know, but that's, that's what I came up with when I...
Yeah, it looks like you printed it out last week.
Pardon?
It looks like you printed it out this week on Monday.
Yes, you did.
The second question I have for you, Mr. Mallett, is, did you apply for a full permit, a full building permit, or was it a land use permit?
There should be a copy of my application, the next to the last page.
Okay, because the other thing that you had mentioned is that your addition was under 100 square feet. Title 23 didn't require you to apply. Last time, and I'll admit that I haven't stayed current on this, but the last I heard is that you were still under land use permits, which means Title 23, the building code, doesn't apply to Eagle River.
It does, it said on there to Girdwood and Eagle River, outstanding from the Anchorage municipality that it applied. Otherwise, in the intended municipality, it did not apply.
Okay, okay. Well, I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I didn't get this information to you earlier, but I just came across it as I was studying the code, which I should have done before I built a garage.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicant, of the board? Does staff have any questions of the applicant?
No, you don't.
If not, then thank you, Mr. Mallett. We will have a seat and see if there's anyone from the public wishing to testify. We will open up this, the hearing for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify on this case? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal? And you could probably save yourself some time, but maybe the question's going to be asked, I'm sure, regarding Mr. Dunham's question of the applicant on that section of the code. Did you have a chance to research?
If you look at page 39 of your packet, that's the letter for the determination of nonconforming status. Pretty much in those bullet items, it lays out the whole history of the site. Zoning went into effect in 1974. That house was moved onto the property in 1978, which means it does not have nonconforming Numerous changes were made to the house. You can see the photograph in the submittal that shows what it looked like when it was moved on and what it looks like today. No building permits, no land use permits were obtained for any of that work. And Mr. Mallett did apply for a building permit for the garage, but as I said earlier, went ahead and built without receiving approval. And as it was an outstanding case, code enforcement was going through their backlog of cases that were similar and contacted Mr. Mallett, and that's where we are today. And the garage, you know, the size of the garage is 434 square feet. It says that on his application, that he applied for, that he applied on his residential permit application on page 50 of the packet.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Mr. Mallett, do you have any rebuttal?
I would like to see if the two items that I, you and I discussed, if they actually are in there, and if they are, I think they should be considered in your decision.
And the letter.
Huh?
We didn't get that letter.
Well, I know. I've already said that. You know, we just, for some reason, we didn't get that letter. I don't know why, but I didn't intentionally try to fluff the law.
With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I please have a positive motion from a board member? Mr. Dunham. Have you, are you... Sure, yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of 2012-08, I move that, 080, I move that the board grant a variance from AMC 2140-040G to allow an encroachment into the front yard setback. And I'm going to ask for a little guidance from staff. Would we also require a variance from AMC 2155-040A?
Yes.
Okay. And a variance from AMC 2155-040A to allow an addition to a nonconforming, are basically the increase... the increasing of a nonconformity, subject to the conditions listed by staff on page six of the board packet.
Those are stand, or conditions one, two, and three on page six.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Ms. Denny, you denunciated seconding that motion?
Yes, I have.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Mr. Dunham, would you speak to your motion, please?
I'm really kind of wobbly on this one, because I think the petitioners have done a great job and a service to the community by really improving that property. If you look at the house before and afterwards, this is a huge improvement. But we also have the situation of, you know, basically, and I understand that they probably didn't create the initial violation, but they did perpetuate it by not waiting for the permits to be adjudicated. I'm leaning towards supporting this variance request, but, and it's primarily because of the efforts of the petitioners to clean that property up and make it look nice. But the problem I've got is that if we do something like this, it kind of sets a precedent for other people to go out there and do what they want to do without paying attention to the zoning law. So I'd like to hear some more discussion on it.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Ms. Denny.
I agree with Mr. Dunham and applaud the Mallett's efforts in increasing the appearance of their property and the property value. But I believe that the situation of the house on that particular part of the lot is due to the drop-off in the back and the unsuitableness of the fill in behind the house that limited them to putting the house and the garage in its present location. I do plan to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do intend to support the motion as well. If I could divert the board's attention to page 33, the photos on page 33 and the old as-built on page 42. There was clearly a deck constructed as part of the house as it used to be, and that deck is shown on the as-built on page 42. And although difficult to measure, maybe I'd ask someone else's interpretation if, in fact, the petitioner has lessened the dimensional size of the encroachment by getting rid of that deck, or if it's unintelligible. But if, in fact, that encroachment is, has been lessened, that adds support to my reasoning for supporting the motion. Regarding standards one and two, we've heard testimony from the petitioner and seen photographs in their application packet regarding slope and drainage. And for those reasons, I find that standards one and two are at least partially met and therefore intend to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Are there any other comments from any board members?
I also intend to support the motion, although have similar in my thought processes as well as my reservations are similar to the comments that Mr. Ron made, the reservations that Mr. Dunham made as well. And I appreciate Mr. Ron drawing my attention to the old as-built on page 42. And I concur with his findings that this is probably a, there's a reduction in the footprint over what was there in this 1989 as-built. So I also intend to support the motion.
Mr. Dunham.
Mr. Chairman, I've listened, and I am going to support this variance request, although it's with the caution to the petitioners that if you have any future building permit activities there, wait for the permit to be issued. Okay? This is a big problem when you come to us afterwards. But I find that some exceptional and extraordinary circumstances do exist with a property. The unsuitable fill that the petitioners mentioned in their testimony, I believe, created this circumstance, and I find that that standard's met, standard one is met. Let's see, because of physical circumstances, the district applications code would create an exceptional or undue hardship on the property owner and would deprive him of, the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. I find that this standard has been met because the petitioners have moved that structure towards more compliance with the underlying zoning district, even though it's not fully compliant. And that, I think one could argue that it's really, at this point, an improvement, significant improvement over what was there. Number three, the hardship is not self-imposed, and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and such conditions and circumstances do not merely constitute an inconvenience. As I said earlier, it's clear to me that the petitioners did not initially create this and, in fact, moved the structure towards conformity, so I find that that standard is met. I concur with staff's finding that standard number four is substantially met, as well as number five, number six, and number seven, that those standards are met. I intend to vote for this request.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham, and thank you for specifically speaking to the seven standards with your findings. Are there other comments from the board? If not, please vote. That motion passes by a vote of 7 to 0 with two abstention, or two members absent. For the record, I need to read that every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. That brings us to our next case, case 2012-114. The petitioner, Anchorage Community Health Services Incorporated. Is the petitioner here this evening? A hand went up indicating they're here. Could we have a presentation by staff first on the sufficiency of notice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On August 21st, a total of 119 public hearing notices were mailed. None were returned, and no comments were received from the public or the community council.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Would you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you. Page five has a site plan prepared by the owner of the property, the petitioner in this variance case. If you look at page five, it shows nine parking spaces. One open spot is actually like handicap accessible or van accessible. There is room to accommodate the required parking of nine on this site, and those five parking spaces in the rear of the lot near all that landscaping, that's a gravel, those are gravel parking spaces currently. They can't be considered proper parking spaces until they're paved at cost to the petitioner, as well as providing lighting. And this is a residential neighborhood, and it may not be welcome to have that lighting. And because this is an affordable housing project, it may not be welcome to have to pave those additional parking spaces. But I just wanted to point out how the site plan appears. There's also a, the driveway to this fourplex is on the neighbor's property, and they have an agreement for common access. And we're just waiting on proof of that, and I'll get into the condition of approval to provide that evidence of a recorded common access or common driveway agreement. If you look on page eight, it's not really easy to see, but you can see an aerial photo of the property. The checkered line is the subject property. You can see how the cul-de-sac that dead-end the neighboring property and this fourplex share a driveway, and it's existed for a long time in that configuration. The petition site is 14,500 square feet lot, zoned R3 multifamily residential. The Anchorage Community Health Services Incorporated would like to remodel this two-story fourplex to be used as affordable housing for persons who experience disabilities, including mental health disabilities. The petitioner requests a variance from the off-street parking requirements for multifamily dwellings to allow a four parking space reduction, which, I'm sorry, to allow four parking spaces, which is a five-space reduction. Standard number one is met. The intent of this standard is that the applicant can demonstrate that the amount of parking required by code is in excess of what is actually required to serve the existing purpose or use. The tenant, the tenants will be persons with mental illness and very limited income, and in general do not drive. The petitioner is proposing four spaces. That's two spaces for onsite management, one space for guest parking, and one space for tenant parking. Tenants will use public transportation, people mover, anchor rides, and will have transportation provided to them by the onsite management staff. Traffic department has stated that they have no objection to the parking reduction of five spaces. Standard number two is also met. This standard is to ensure that if arguments supporting standard number one turn out to be incorrect, the additional parking, if additional parking is needed, that it can be provided on property without creating spillover parking problem. So the response is that if assumptions about parking demand are incorrect, then there is sufficient space to accommodate all nine parking spaces onsite. And in fact, those parking spaces do exist, they're just not paved. The department recommends approval of the parking variance as standards number one and two are met, subject to conditions one through four on pages three and four of your packet. Condition one says provide an updated as-built, I'm sorry, an updated site plan showing four parking spaces approved by the traffic engineer. So they would just essentially take the drawing that they have and remove those parking spaces shown on the rear of the lot. Number two, condition number two is just to record this site plan and the approval of the resolution. Condition three is approve, the approved variance is, it just states what the approved variance is, is for a five parking space reduction from the nine to allow the four parking spaces. And it says at the end here, for as long as the property is owned by the Anchorage Community Health Services Incorporated. And that's because this is the business of affordable housing. This is what they do. If the property were to be sold, they have no plans for that. They have long-term plans to keep it as-is. But if this were to ever be sold, then those, this parking space reduction would not apply. They would be subject to the regular parking space reductions. That would hopefully be caught in any change of use permit or building permit with the property. And this, the recording of this variance on the property would be discovered, hopefully, at the time of sale. So we, the department finds that we're pretty covered in this parking variance. And then on the next page, condition number four, provide evidence of recorded common access agreement on the neighboring property to use that common driveway. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Are there any questions of staff by the board?
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fink.
I have a question, Mr. McGlaughlin. Thank you for the presentation. I'm just curious, where are the five spots that would be eliminated?
Could you just say that last part?
It's, where are the spots that would be eliminated? Does it currently have nine parking spaces at this?
Yes, it currently has nine spaces, but the ones in the rear of the property are not paved or lit. That's the north, budding the bank. There's just gravel there.
I think I need to follow up as well. So specifically on page five, I thought I had it, Mr. Fink, but then you asked a good question, and the answer confused me. So on page five, on the right-hand side, the remodel roof site plan shows nine parking spaces. Are you, and I'll maybe get clarification from the applicant as well, on the, what would be the north side of the parking lot, are those five spaces the ones that would be eliminated if this variance were granted?
Correct. I apologize for the confusion. So we're all looking at the drawing. These are the parking, this is the parking that would be put in if they don't receive the variance. But they don't want to have to pave those five spaces in the rear. So if the variance is granted, then they won't, and they'll just stick with these spaces that are up against the building. And that's preferred for people with disabilities anyway, to be able to park right there, or to have access closest to the building without having to traverse the parking lot. It's less pavement in this residential zone, it's less lighting. It's kind of crazy that our land use regulations require anything above a duplex to have lighting in the parking lot, and that may be inappropriate in a residential zone. And it's a great cost to the applicant, or to the owner of the property as well.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Mr. Dunham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. McGlaughlin, just so I have it straight in my mind, I'm going back to the five spaces. They're not going to provide these, even though they would be gravel?
Yeah, they don't want to have to provide those parking spaces. That is, to pave that spot. They could, which speaks to standard number two.
Right.
But they don't want to, and so we feel that...
When you originally presented it, it sounded to me like they were going to provide those five, but they would be gravel, they wouldn't meet the standard, so you couldn't count them as part of the required parking, or part of the provided parking.
Well, that's accurate as well.
Okay. Wait, I have another question, before I forget it.
Yes, Mr. Dunham.
This variance, and I've been with, on the board a while, so the condition number three, where you say it's only approved for this owner, we've talked about this in the past. Have you run this condition by the municipal attorney's office?
No, I haven't run it past the municipal attorney's office.
One of the things that we've had in the past is that the variance goes with the property, it doesn't go with the owner. So that's, I guess, to me, this does not indicate that it would go that way. So, you know, I would suggest, I don't mind passing it as part of the conditions, but I think you need to run it by the municipal attorney, because I'm not sure that that's correct.
Through the chair, Mr. Dunham, that's a really good point. No, we didn't check with the municipal attorney. I see your point. A lot of thought was put into crafting that condition, but it wasn't checked with legal. You know, if the board feels more comfortable approving the variance, if the board approves the variance, if the board feels more comfortable eliminating that phrase from the end of it, what staff was trying to do is to work with the owner to, the board in the, I've seen other parking variances in front of the board recently, and one of the concerns that the board expressed was, well, what happens if the property ownership or the use changes? And they wanted to tie... And they wanted to tie, the board seemed to want to tie it to the owner in case the use changed and it was no longer affordable housing or mental health, you know, directed housing. And it was an attempt to address that.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dunham. And yes, I agree with you, Mr. McGlaughlin. This board recently has had that conversation, but as Mr. Dunham has said, I do also recall previous staff presentations have indicated that the variance goes with the land and it's not with the use. So maybe that's something that we can discuss with our, in our discussion when we're voting on the motion. Ms. Denny and Mr. Fink, and Ms. Denny?
My question regards on staff recommendations number four regarding the common access agreement, will that exist in perpetuity if the neighboring property is sold?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And not to beat this to death, but just on the parking, I'm looking at page five. So I understand the, on the remodel site plan, those five spots on the north would be available for overflow?
Through the chair, Mr. Fink. I'm going to give you the long-winded answer because if I give you the short one, then it won't be, it'll leave people with half ideas. It won't be accurate. Okay, so the petitioner has drawn out nine spaces as required by code, so they can accommodate all nine spaces. That's great. They're only going to be providing four spaces. That's what they're proposing with this parking variance. And those are the four that are against the building.
But if friends, family were to visit for the holidays or something and needed to park their car, that would be available-
Yeah.
-on a temporary basis to park a vehicle?
Yeah, people, my understanding is people are parking there now, it's just not paved.
And then, it doesn't look like the current house has nine spaces, or I guess they do. I mean, does the current lot have nine spaces?
That's a good question, I hadn't considered that. And maybe that's why people are parking there now.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff by the board? If not, could the applicant come forward, please? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Vig?
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. McGlaughlin, does this use of the property involve any kind of conditional use permit of any sort?
It does not.
Okay.
It's a by right.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, could the applicant now come forward, please? Could you please state and spell your name for the record?
I'm Jerry Jenkins, J.E.R.R.Y. Jenkins, J.E.N.K.I.N.S. I'm Executive Director of Anchorage Community Mental Health Services.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
I'm Shannon Wilks, S.H.A.N.N.O.N.W.I.L.K.S. And I'm the Director of Program Development for Anchorage Community Mental Health Services.
Thank you, Ms. Wilks. You have 10 minutes for your presentation. And again, we, for a variance from off-street parking requirements, we have to find that two standards are met. And so if your presentation could maybe speak to those, as well as what is there and what you're planning to put there might help as well.
Currently, there's a fourplex there, which we are in process of rehabilitating and contemporizing, meeting code and things of this nature. So whenever we went into permitting, it comes back that we need nine parking spaces. And I'm trying to be frugal with dollars and was saying, I'm not sure we have need for that many parking spaces with the population that we serve, which are people with mental illness, normally do not drive, normally don't have many visitors. And I know the times that I've been to the, to the building, there's only been one or two cars max, so I'm trying to save some dollars, quite frankly, by not adding that piece. And also the lighting that goes with it. And we are in agreement with Mr. McGlaughlin that if we change the use, and currently we have some restrictions on the property because of the way we obtained it, and there's restrictions with our funding, that we continue to use it for special needs housing for people with mental illness. As long as we're the owner, operators, we see that population being served. If we happen to not own that property, then we definitely understand at that point adding the parking, but not until that time. Ms. Wilks, anything to add? She's my zoning expert and compliance officer and a few things like that, so.
At this time, well, we acquired the property in 1989, at the time when the Alaska State Housing Authority had, had foreclosed on a number of properties after the crash in the housing market in the mid-1980s. And at that time, they worked with the Department of Health and Social Services and the then Division of Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities to provide some of these foreclosed properties to various service providers around the state. And that's when we acquired this. We were given title to this property in 1996 with a 20-year covenant on it. The funding that we've received to do the rehab of the property, it's had basic maintenance over the course of the years, but it really needs some major rehab and some electrical code upgrades. And we want to make one unit fully accessible for people that would be in a wheelchair and another unit that would have sight and sound accessibility features as well. And the funding that we are getting this, getting from primarily the Alaska Mental Health Trust Authority through the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation is also, once this project is finished, is going to put another 20-year covenant for restricted use upon this property. And it's our intention, once this thing is now, is getting to be upgraded, that we will continue to operate this because there's a severe lack of affordable housing within the Anchorage market. And that's been shown through the, through the market analysis that was released here a couple of months ago, and also through the work that the Department of Health and Human Services is doing with regards to the consolidated plan. So the continued use of this as affordable housing is within and identified within the planning processes of the municipality already at this point.
Mr. Chair, will take any questions that you may have of us.
Thank you. And my question, which I think a couple of us have danced around, do you have the packet in front of you?
Yes.
Page five of the staff packet.
The map, the drawing.
So on the left-hand side, it says, on the left, the demo site roof plan, that is your paved parking area, that is existing right now, is that correct? On what is, has the detail number one, left-hand side of the sheet?
Adjacent to the building.
Yes.
Yes.
Adjacent to the building, where it says paved parking area. That is, is that your existing parking?
That's existing paved parking.
That's existing right now, okay. You've indicated, yes, that is existing.
Yes, that is existing paved parking.
Thank you. On the right-hand side, number two, the site plan does show nine spaces. However, is your intention and request not to build the five northerly parking spaces?
Adjacent to the shed with an accompanying light pole, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are there other questions of the applicant? Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jenkins, those five spaces that you don't intend on paving, that would still be available for any overflow parking necessary?
Yes. And so we'd all, we also have yard there as well that could be utilized, but I'm not advocating that, I'm just saying if, if people were needing a place to park. And the history is, we're not the ones who normally park there. And that hasn't been said, it's neighbors. So we're, for our business, that's what we need.
Are there any other question, I'm sorry, Mr. Fink, did that answer your question?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the applicant by the board? Does staff have any questions?
No, sir.
If not, thank you, Mr. Jenkins and Ms. Wilks, we'll open the hearing up for public testimony.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Now that you've just sat down, Mr. Jenkins, do you have any rebuttal after we've closed the public hearing? He's indicated that he does not have any rebuttal. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion for this case, please? Mr. Vig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case number 2012-114, a move that we grant, a variance from AMC 2145080B2 to allow four parking spaces, which is a five-space reduction, subject to department recommendations one through four on pages three and four of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Fink, you've indicated seconding that motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Mr. Vig, will you speak to your motion, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I concur with staff's findings on standard number one and the applicant's testimony convinces me that the needs of the facility can be met with fewer parking spaces in this instance. And so I believe they've demonstrated that, to my satisfaction, that standard one is Standard number two, that spillover parking onto other properties will be avoided. Referencing the proposed remodel plan on page five of the packet, it's apparent that additional parking could be provided to the north of the existing paved parking lot should spillover parking occur. And so I think, again, that demonstrates to me that standard number two is met. I'm a little bit unsure about recommendation number three, as we've discussed, and I'd be interested to hear other board members' opinions on that. I also wonder, I should have thought to ask Mr. McGlaughlin at the time, but whether, whether it would make sense to have a recommendation or a condition that if spillover parking does occur, then there is a requirement, there is a requirement for those five spaces to be paved and lit. It does say that there is sufficient space to do it, but if spillover parking happens, is there a mechanism to create that complying parking with those five spaces? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Was there, was there a question to Mr. McGlaughlin? I'm sorry, I'm trying to-
Yeah, I guess, well, or maybe other board members could weigh in on their thoughts with regard to that.
And the question was, if, if that spillover parking was required, would it have to be paved and lit? Is that, was that your question?
Well, if spillover was-
Necessary?
And, and there needed to be some mitigation for that, is there a way to enforce or require that these five spaces be paved and lit?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vig.
Point of information?
Yes, Mr. McGlaughlin.
Point of information in response to Mr. Vig's question, those are all correct statements. It appears that with this condition number three, the board maybe has three options that I can think of. One is to approve the, the condition as written, one is to delete the second, you know, part of that condition that speaks to, you know, for as long as it's owned by the Anchorage Community Health Services, just delete that and just approve the variance for four and leave it at that. So that's option two. Option, so option one is to leave the condition as is, option two is to delete that phrase, option three is to rephrase the condition to say that if spillover parking onto a neighbor's property becomes an issue, that, that the, that the variance becomes null and void. I'd recommend against that, staff doesn't find that that needs to be there. We didn't craft any language, so you'd be sort of making it up on the fly. And we don't know the, we haven't, haven't the ability to think through the consequences of the word choices that we make now. And people find out about it years later and shake their heads, so. But, but, but those are the three options, you can, you can do that if you, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Just a question regarding your, your option number two, if we were going to strike the rest of that sentence for as long as the property is owned, doesn't that condition be, become the same as number one?
It may be, but we typically, the standard conditions are, one is stating exactly what's approved and the next condition is stating you need to record a nosa zoning action. So those are on every one of these.
No, I was asking if standard three-
Yeah.
Or condition number three.
It's the same as one, right.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I understand. So to directly answer your question, I'm sorry, staff recommends that you keep condition three because condition one is intended for them to just update the, the site plan to remove those five spaces so that the recorded document is crystal clear, that there's only four spaces and where those spaces are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Mr. Fink, you had seconded that motion?
I did, Mr. Chairman, and I intend on supporting the motion. I agree with Mr. Vig and staff that standard one is met. I believe the applicant has demonstrated that the parking, that the four spaces is sufficient. And I believe the spillover parking issue is addressed with the additional spaces to the north. With regard to the department recommendations, I mean, I share his concerns with number three. I'm not a land use lawyer, but I've always understood that these things run with the land. I like the concept, I like what it's doing, I don't know if it causes litigation somewhere way down the road. So I guess I'm ambivalent. I mean, I like what it does, I don't know if it's legal. I don't really want to craft anything that says if, if spillover was a problem, then they need to pave it. I mean, that's problematic, I think, from a number of perspectives as well. So I intend on supporting it and I could go either way on whether we remove number three. And I see a reason for keeping it, it states kind of intent and purpose, but if it's not really a legal condition, it also could create unnecessary litigation down the road. I intend on supporting the message and would like to hear from others on number three.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Ms. Wadd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add on condition number three, I feel very strongly that we need to tie any variance with the population that's to be served, which could be identified by Anchorage Community Mental Health Services. Should, should the property be transferred to another owner, that's obviously the time when you would want the variance to be no longer in effect. So I think it's, it's very important to tie it either A to the population being served or to the party in particular. And I'm certainly not a lawyer, but this is pretty common practice from my experience. And I've, I've seen this happen with elderly facilities, if there is- If there isn't a need, you show the ability to provide the parking in the future should the use change. So I just wanted to voice my concern about eliminating that.
Thank you, Ms. Vlade. Mr. Dunham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also intend to support the variance request, and I believe that both conditions are met. And since I opened this can of worms, condition number three, I would like to either remove it or revise it to state that they paved the parking in 20 years when their lease ends or when that lease restriction ends on the property. Something like that. Don't even address the user, just address a timeframe for compliance. Because at some point down the line, it, it may revert back to a fourplex. And that's my, my suggestion, that or eliminate the condition altogether. Because I really don't think that this one's going to fly past the municipal attorney.
How about this, Mr. Dunham, or Mr. Ron, you're, you're in the queue. How about, we have your comment, and then if that is the case, we'll need a motion to make an amendment. Right now, the motion before us has the four standard, or the four conditions for approval. So, Mr. Ron, you wanted to make a comment?
You can guess it's about recommendation three. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to touch briefly on two points that Board Member Vlade spoke to, and that's, my concern relating this issue is to the use of the property itself and not the owner. So if the language of concern from a legal standpoint is tying the condition to the owner itself, then I suggest we revert that language to speak more directly to the property use, and that may be more passable. That said, I am agreeable to striking that phrase of concern altogether, given the existing and likely future covenant that, for at least, it looks like another 24 years, locks in this property to the use that I intend to support the motion for.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. McLaughlin, I'm glad you weighed in. Could I ask a question? We pass this resolution. If we pass this resolution, can we make that standard, subject to, that condition number three as written, subject to review and concurrence by legal? Is there any requirement for this to go by legal?
No, there's no requirement to, and you, the, the staff does not cautions you about adding to the condition in a way that would require the condition that was approved to go through. It's, it's not the appropriate order to go through legal review. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to work that way. But I got into the queue just to respond to Mr. Ron, to point out point of information for Mr. Ron and the rest of the board, which is originally staff worked with the applicant to craft a condition that tied it, tied this approval to a use, and that was found to not be the best way to go. And the reason why is any wording that you use, affordable housing, people with mental health, all those issues, those aren't defined in our code, and it, it's not, you know, who defines what's affordable housing? We didn't, we don't, we don't recommend changing the condition. If, if the board is not comfortable with the, the condition, then just strike the, the second half of that. But, but please don't change it to the use, and tinkering with the wording is, is problematic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Are there, so we have before us a motion to approve with the four conditions. I would entertain a motion to amend, or if we do not have that motion, then we will be voting on the main motion. Mr. Dunham?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend our previous motion to eliminate condition number three.
Eliminate condition number three. Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Do we have a second to that motion? Mr. Fink?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I second Mr. Dunham's motion to amend.
Thank you. Mr. Dunham, would you speak to your motion?
I, I, I would prefer to condition this for municipal attorney review, but if staff's uncomfortable doing it, then I don't see any reason to keep it. It seems to be, I'm not happy with it, but, you know, I, I think that, you know, that's what we have. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I, I like what it does, but I'm just not sure it's, it's legal, and my gut is telling me it's not. And, you know, I, I think we should avoid passing something that we're not sure, if we're not convinced of its legality. I mean, it, it causes potentially unnecessary litigation. I'm also, the, the fact that they've got a long-term lease, and I understand a 20-year covenant after the remodel, tells me it's going to be in their possession, their hands for some time into the future. So that reassures me. While I like what it does, I, I'm not, I guess, I'm going to support the amendment, and if it fails, I'm still going to support the, the variance. But if, if I'm not sure about something's legality, I mean, I'm a lawyer. It just creates needs for lawyers down the road and, and hold things up, and, and so I'm going to support getting rid of it.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may have missed part of the earlier discussion from Mr. McLaughlin about this, but I was under the impression that staff wanted to keep condition three in part. Am I incorrect in that recollection?
Mr. McLaughlin, would you clarify your earlier statement, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yeah, staff would prefer to, to keep the first part of condition three, but if it is stricken, then I see no problem with that either. Staff's comfortable with the amendment proposed as being sufficient to tie this to a four-space, a four-space variance, or a five-space variance limiting it to four parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vig?
Thank you. I, I think that it's safe to eliminate recommendation number three in its entirety for the reason that in the, in the request and the motion that was made, it states that variance is to allow four parking spaces, which is a five-space reduction. It seems to me that that would be contained in the resolution that ultimately is recorded and filed. I think it serves the purpose of stating exactly what, what the variance is and how much of a reduction it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there other comments on the motion to eliminate standard number, condition number three? Are there any other comments? I, I also intend to support the motion. I, Ms. Vlade, I concur with, with, with your, your thoughts. My concern, however, is, is just the legality of it, that, that the variance goes with the land, not that it's not a good idea. So I, I, I will be supporting the motion to amend the elimination of condition number three. Are there other comments, discussion? If not, please vote on this motion. That motion passes by a vote of six to one. So we have before us the main motion with now the three conditions for approval. Do we have further discussion on the main motion? If not, please vote. That motion passes by a vote of seven to zero with two members absent. Again, for the record, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. Our last case this evening is case 2012-113. The petitioner is James and Connie Scarrow. Are they present this evening? They've indicated they're here. Could we have staff provide the sufficiency of notice, please?
Yes, excuse me, on July 31st, 2012, 114 public hearing notices were mailed. As of the writing of the staff report, two comments were returned. The neighbors did not oppose the proposed garage encroachment into the setback.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Will you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for a variance from 214003G to allow a garage to be rebuilt and encroach 1.3 feet into a required front yard setback. A variance is also needed to allow the garage to be built less than 10 feet from the principal structure. The garage was destroyed by fire in April, and when the contractor went to get a building permit to rebuild it, the contractor and the owners at that time discovered that the garage was within the front yard setback. The owners would like to rebuild the garage on the existing concrete pad as it was not damaged in the fire. The code states that should a non-conforming structure be damaged to the extent of 50% or more, it shall not be reconstructed except in conformity with the provisions of the title, which is the front yard setback. That's what we're here to discuss this evening. As more than 50% of the non-conforming structure was destroyed in the fire, the garage cannot be reconstructed in the existing location and must be located in conformity with existing yard setback requirements. Also, the former location of the garage appears to be less than 10 feet from the house. As for the findings, number, standard number one, the standard is not substantially met. The property is not impacted by exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances. The lot size and configuration are similar to other property in the neighborhood. Standard number second, number two, sorry, the standard is, is not substantially met. Special or extraordinary circumstances arise from the physical characteristics of the property. There are no extraordinary physical circumstances on the lot. Standard number three, the standard is partially met. There is adequate space on the lot to rebuild the garage 1.3 feet to the north so that it's outside the front yard setback. Likewise, there is adequate space to rebuild the garage further to the east to bring the garage into compliance with the code requirement regarding the 10-foot distance between the principal structure and the accessory structure. However, we do recognize that the applicants would like to reuse the concrete pad that's still there. Standard number four, the standard is substantially met. The garage has been in this location since 1976 with no apparent adverse effects to the adjacent property. As for standards five, six, and seven, the division finds that those are met. Division recommendation, as all seven standards for granting a variance are not substantially met, the division recommends denial of the variance to allow a garage to be rebuilt and encroach into the required 20-foot front yard setback, and also denial of the variance to allow a garage to be rebuilt less than 10 feet from the principal structure. However, if at the conclusion of the public hearing, the board finds that all standards are substantially met and approves the variance request, the division has three conditions on page six of your packet for the board's consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Any questions? Mr. Vig?
Thank you. Ms. Ferguson, the 50% criteria that you cited is related to replacement cost of the structure, is it?
50% of its replacement cost, yes, that's right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there any other questions of staff? If not, could the applicant come forward, please? Could you state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, my name is James Scarrow, S-C-A-R-R-O-W.
Thank you, Mr. Scarrow.
Paul Wood, P-A-U-L-W-O-O-D.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. And who will be making the presentation?
I will.
Thank you. You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Okay. All right. From what I understood, doing the, reading through your, everything here, and it's showing the standards in that, that in number one, C3, the structure building was constructed under different zoning rules, which would be number one. And the neighbors have built other garages after this, and they've attached them to the house. This one here is separated. Number two, the replacement cost for the footing, concrete, and slab and everything is just, the homeowners can't afford it, the insurance won't pay for it. And, you know, he's retired and on a fixed income. And then number three, Ms. Scarrow is in the States, Lower 48, with her mother, and she had to quit her job to take care of her because the people that were taking care of her didn't do a good enough job. Otherwise, she'd be here with us trying to get this variance so they can get their garage and their lives back together. And that's kind of the presentation, and I do have a set of drawings here, which, all it is, is rebuilding the garage as it was before.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Are there questions? If, if you'd like to hand those in, we, we'd need to keep those for 30 days.
Yeah.
If you want to just use those for reference, you could do that.
The drawings?
Yes. Are there questions? Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is probably a simple concept, but I'm, I'm trying to work through this 50% of replacement cost. Have you priced out what it would cost to move the garage and the concrete pad to a conforming location versus the cost to reconstruct it on its current pad?
The cost to rebuild it on its current pad is about $35,000. The cost to move the concrete pad and everything, because you have to tear it all out to move it, is going to be 12, 12 to $18,000. That's just to move it plus
In addition?
In addition to the $35,000.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood, on page 14, I don't know if you have the staff packet?
I
The drawing that has the "as" built. For us, it's our, page 14 of our packet.
Yes.
The driveway and the pictures also show the access to the garage comes in and then turns, turns a 90 to get access. That, that was the existing condition before the fire, and is that?
Yes, it was.
Is that the proposed configuration of the driveway?
Yes.
It is, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dunham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wood, on the ASBilt, going back to the ASBilt, the planter wall that's shown on the, looks like on the east side of the property, is that an elevated, is it like a retaining wall?
No, that's more like a hedge-type thing along there. It's unground planters.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there other questions of the applicant by the Board? Does staff have any questions?
No, Mr. Chair, I don't.
If not, Mr. Wood, thank you. We'll open the hearing up for public testimony.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ron, did you have a question before?
I do, Mr. Wood. Just a second, sorry for the late question. But on the drawings that you showed us, it looks like the footprint may be slightly different in association with some cold storage on the... My directions are off. But in looking at the plan view to the left of that garage?
Yes.
To the north?
That's just cold storage. The roof was going to overhang that. It was there before. It just had a separate roof and some type of support on it. And he covered it up with tarps every winter.
Okay, so is that cold storage on top of the slab, then?
No, it's just hanging from the tresses.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? All right, I think now you can sit down. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, I don't.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal? Mr. Wood has indicated there's no rebuttal. With that, the matter rests with the Board. Could I have a positive motion from a Board member, please? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In Case 2012-113, I move that the Board grant a variance in the R1 district to allow a garage to be rebuilt, which will encroach into the required 20-foot front yard setback according to AMC 21.40.030G, and grant a variance to allow a garage, in this case, an accessory structure, to be rebuilt less than 10 feet from the principal structure in relation to AMC 21.45.030B in accordance with Department of Recommendations 1 through 3 on page six of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. Dunham, you indicated you would second that?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Mr. Ron, would you speak to your motion, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Struggling a little bit with standard number three, and will entertain Board's comments regarding that upon conclusion of my statements here. And also ask the Board to rein me in if necessary, if what I'm about to say is a little bit too off the wall. But in relation to standards one and two, I would like to entertain the idea of considering the slab itself as a condition of the land in the same way that the Board has considered physical circumstances such as streams, wetlands, and/or slopes. The tenure of that slab in the soil itself, the size of it, and the complexity and cost to move it, to me, are of the same magnitude of certain physical circumstances such as slopes and wetlands. So, for those reasons, I find that standards one and two are at least partially met. If I follow that line of argument through standard three, I can't then say that the hardship is not self-imposed because the petitioners did put that slab there. So, that's why I appreciate comments from the Board regarding standard number three. I'll incorporate by reference standard four, standard five, standard six, and standard seven. I agree with staff that all of those standards are substantially met. That's all for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. Dunham?
Mr. Chairman, I concur with Mr. Ron's comments. And I am also struggling with standard number three. Although, the property itself seems to have a lot of activity going on. And given the fact that the structure was there for so many years, I feel like the hardship would be significant. And it would be much more than a self-imposed hardship to have the petitioner move it to some location that's conforming. I view that the encroachment into the front yard setback is almost a de minimis encroachment. Separation from the structure, the primary structure, to the accessory structure. One of the arguments we use is for fire separation. The fact that the structure caught on fire and didn't catch the house on fire kind of makes the argument that the structure was at a safe distance. So, I believe that standard number three is met, and I intend to support this request.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Mr. Vig?
To pick up on the ball that Mr. Ron threw out there, first of all, I agree with his analysis of standards one and two in that the slab itself is a physical circumstance, an exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstance. And the reason it is an exceptional physical circumstance is because it caught on fire and lost its non-conforming rights. And so, with regard to standard number three, unless the applicant was responsible for the fire that caused the physical circumstance to be present in this case that we're talking about, I would have to say that it was not self-imposed and that it was an action that was not of their doing. So, I can rationalize in my mind that standard three is met as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there any other comments from any of the Board members? I, oh, Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just based on the comments of Mr. Dunham and Mr. Vig, I too agree that standard three is met, and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. I also intend to support the motion and concur with staff's findings that standard four, five, six, and seven are substantially met, and concur with the findings of the Mr. Dunham, Mr. Vig, and Mr. Ron on one and three. I'd also like to add, with respect to standard one, this is actually also a double-fronted lot. And with dedication for diamond on the north side, and there's 75 feet of dedication for that. The lot's 125 foot deep, which, while not extremely narrow, it's a little bit on the shorter side of what it could have been if you consider that there's 30 feet of dedication for shore crest. 30 feet for diamond would have, could have potentially added another 45 feet to the depth of that lot. So, it's a narrower lot. And for me on these cases, I look at the timing as well. And the house being built in 1969, the garage being built in 1976. As the petitioner said, it was, you know, the original home was constructed under different zoning rules. And that placement of the house, original foundation and the garage were at a different time. So, for those reasons, I find that standard one is met. The standard two, the driveway configuration is to remain the same. And I actually believe that that's offering a safer situation for the municipality, for people. It looks like they do not have to back directly onto the street. There's some maneuverability. As opposed to possibly setting this garage back two or three or five feet, I think that would then require access to go directly in off of shore. So, I think we're actually having a safer situation with the configuration that we've got. So, I think the driveway configuration addresses standard two in my mind. And again, the timing of construction and placement of the home, I do think that it's really not self-imposed in the standpoint of they didn't have control over the regulations that came into effect after these structures replaced on the lot. So, for those reasons, I intend to support the motion as well. Are there any other comments by any of the Board? If not, please vote. That motion passes by a vote of seven to zero. Again, for the record, every final decision of the Board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. That was our last case of the evening. Moving on to our agenda, reports. I have no reports. Are there any comments from any of the Board members? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, if the Board could discuss what transpired in our second case this evening and the lack of consistency, perhaps, if that's the correct terminology, from what we experienced in our last Board meeting in what appeared to be a very similar issue in discussions of use of a property in relation to parking requirements. I definitely need to spin myself up more on the code, but would like to discuss very briefly with the Board whether or not we can put a request to staff to delve further into that issue and see if in the future we're presented with a similar case, how we might proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ron. Ms. Ferguson, if planning staff could have that discussion with legal department. As Mr. Ron indicated, in last month's Board meeting, we had a similar case where we did somewhat tie the approval to the use. And it came up again this month. So, the legality of that. And will that pass the, not just the red face test, but the legal process? And then, I guess, secondly, what are our, you know, what are our options as a Board for, I think we all recognize, what we'd like to be able to do? How can we best assure that when we relax these parking standards, I think the intention of us granting the variance, how we can make sure we're covered as best we can be? Does that convey your concerns, Mr. Ron? Ms. Wad?
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, because I had noticed that, even though I had to recuse myself last week specifically how that was noted. So, I guess I'm a little concerned that we have a contradictory motion. And so, if somebody goes back in the record and looks at that, are we at risk for anything? So, I'm very interested in understanding how we need to present those motions.
We'll look into that and give a...
Thank you. Are there other comments from Board members? Does anyone know if they will or will not be in town next month? When is our meeting? The 11th? October 11th? Is anyone planning on being at a... By the way, I like how the majority of the Board members respond. "I plan to attend." Not that I will, just like giving themselves an out. Right now, there's one case. Any other comments? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.